Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Rye Town Council meeting of April 17th, 2018. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you stand? Heavenly Father, bless this assemblage. Grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded and in the best interest for all its residents. Amen.
Please remain standing in memory, first of all, of Joa Souza, a Blind Brook student who was tragically killed yesterday at the University of Binghamton. And also, just happened, Barbara Bush passed away this evening. Thank you. Debbie, roll call, please. Or not Debbie, oh, wrong one. That was the last one.
Counselperson Lindsey Jackson.
Here.
Counselperson Thomas Snardi.
Present.
Counselperson Jill Axelrod.
Here.
Counselperson Anthony Baxter.
Here.
And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Here. We have minutes of March 20th, 2018. If there are no additions, I don't know if mine has that addition. You made that addition? Okay. Okay, thank you. May I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of March 20th?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from the public?
Since there are not very many comments coming from the public, I thought you would all enjoy an update on our rental of Crawford Park to the production company that makes Blindside. I want to let you know that we've received a check for $2,000 additional dollars. So we made $24,000 from the rental of the property. And they've sent me a note that the final episode is going to be airing in May. I just haven't looked up the date. I will do that in a sec.
That's terrific. That's good money.
And I think they had a, they've clearly told us that they had a fantastic time here, and they are looking forward to coming back.
Great. That's wonderful. Don't forget the checkbook.
They know that everything's going to be renovated?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Communications, a resolution changing the meeting date from May 15th to May 17th, 2018. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Resolution rejecting a trash and recycling services bid. Debbie, just briefly, what is this about? And...
By the way, everybody, the day that our mansion is going to be featured on Blindside is May 18th. That's the date for the schedule.
Okay, great.
Now, on for the trash and recycling bid. As you all know, we changed our trash and recycling arrangements about a year ago when the village of Portchester declined to continue collecting the trash and recycling on our behalf. So we went out to bid, and we've had Winter Brothers of Connecticut in place ever since. But we wanted to test the market to make sure we really did have the best price. And so when the village of Rybrook put out an RFP this past winter, we went out with them to see if we could get a better bid. And we got only one. It was not better. We have a much better deal right now, and so we are rejecting this bid.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into a contract for supplemental landscape and design services. This is with Denisha's firm who did Crawford Park. Debbie?
Yes. Many of you may recall that Denisha Williams of, what's her firm called again?
Being There.
Being Here Design worked with us on the site plan for the sensory garden, for placement of the playground and the paths running to it and off the mansion. We found that she was highly detail-oriented, truly had the best interests of the town at heart. And one of the things that really distinguished her proposal when we went out to bid for landscape designers was the extent to which she appreciated our commitment to accessibility for all types of people. And she really put herself in the shoes or the wheels of someone with special needs. So she was a terrific partner for us. And we are about to need, we need signage at the entrance to the park, throughout the park. That needs to be consistent, attractive message correctly to the park users. We also are about to have the foundation plantings all around the mansion challenged by a renovation project, and so we would like to engage your services to guide us through that process.
Questions?
Yes. Have we notified friends of Crawford Park? Have we advised them that this is our intention?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And they're all on board.
Perfect. I think it would be great, just because she is very enthusiastic about making the park accessible, which is what we are trying to do throughout with the building. And I think it would be a great addition to have her on the team.
Thank you. Did we have a motion and a second? Motion and a second, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Snardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Resolution accepting the justice court audit. This doesn't mean we necessarily agree with it, just that we're accepting it. And we do this every year. Of course, we do agree with it, but that's something else. This is a resolution to accept the justice court audit by O'Connor and Davies, our auditors. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
I have a follow-up question. Where are we with the ticket payments online for the town court?
You know, I don't know the answer to that.
I received, I asked for and received from Sturgis Web Services examples of the other sites that they've built for other governments, and it's in my to-do box. Okay.
Resolution appointing consultant to assist in a town-wide revaluation of property. We went through a process spearheaded by the assessment task force to appoint a consultant or recommend to the board a consultant to assist in the town-wide revaluation. The consultant is going to be drafting the RFP for the revale contractor and basically, and help us to choose the revale contractor. So this is a very important position. It's not a lot of money initially. It's only $5,000. And the assessment task force has recommended McCarthy Consulting Service, which is, Edie McCarthy is the principal, and she's also the assessor for the town of Greenberg. Denise, do you want to comment on the process at all, other than we are going out for a, hopefully, a full revale or nearly full revale, especially of our commercial properties, for the 2019 tax year?
Good evening. I agree that Edie is a good choice. She just went through a revale in the town of Greenberg, and she's been, she's a well-seasoned assessor, well-respected in the community, and she knows the ins and outs of what to anticipate, the questions to ask, the pitfalls she may have faced. And so she combines all that into the structure of the RFP to hire the revale company. So I think it's a good choice.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? May I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
On this one, call the roll, please.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Snardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Next one is the tax cert on some of apartments. Jeff, this was your case.
That's correct. This is a building that's on West Chester Avenue. It's about 140 units. It's been, this case is about four years, five years old now, and this is just one in a string of cases that we're trying to settle and not perpetuate refunds in the years. The quirk on this building, the reason why it's coming down is because it has a unit in there. You may have heard me in the past describe buildings that had ETPA units in them. So when you have an ETPA unit in a building...
That's longhand for rent stabilized.
Yeah. It causes a diminution of the value based on some recent case law. Petitioners' counsel can bring these actions and basically allege that the value of the building, and actually, the court supports the value of the building, notwithstanding the other market rate, condos or co-ops in there. The fact that there are a few ETPA units in there sort of spreads out over the whole building, and the whole building's value, the building's value comes down. And so this case is one of those.
We have a couple of others coming up as well.
We have several others coming up. This is a recommended settlement based on extensive negotiation. I would recommend this.
Thank you. Denise, any comment or no comment? All right. Thank you. May I have a motion and a second?
Can I just ask one quick question and I apologize?
I just asked for that.
Sorry. I just, it just came to mind. The recent court rulings on ETPA, that is not retroactive, correct? So that future buildings that you said are coming down the pipeline, they won't be able to argue their taxes or can't be taken into account for taxes from years prior? Or...
So what happens is, if the building has ETPA units in them, the petitioner's attorneys look to these, this case law that's out there, that's controlling what's happening to the assessed value of these buildings, and they'll continue to bring these actions as long as that case law is in effect. So there could be more coming down.
But they would have to do it in a year-by-year basis. In essence, they can't argue for 2014 now. That's gone and done, or 2015. They would have to bring it for...
No, unless they bring these cases on a yearly basis, they just generally, they let them accumulate, or they do accumulate, so they actually get them into the courtroom upon the calendar. And I may have described this process in the past, but that's what happens.
Do they have a minimum of apartments for the building? Or just, as long as they just have one?
One. One.
But the minimum, there's no minimum. There's like not a minimum of 10 apartments. It could be just one apartment, and they can go for it.
There was one or two in this. I could look it up.
Well, no, I know the building. I know the building. But I didn't know they still had rentals in there.
It's probably the super unit. They probably kept it, the ETPA, and therefore qualified it.
Well, I know there's two in there for the super, the assistant super, so...
Yeah, I could look up what, how many rented that particular building.
I was just curious if there was a minimum that they went by.
If there's one in there...
That's it. Okay.
Play that card.
Okay.
Let me just add that in cases that are going to come to you for resolution for approval on settlements, it's the supervisors' policy that all the stakeholders are notified. So you may be wondering, well, does the school district know about this? You know, does the village of Portchester know about this? So we're informing them virtually every step of the way. They know what refunds to expect to, you know, to pay out. So there's an enhanced effort to meet with all the stakeholders and let them know and not have them in any way surprised.
So do you have a contact person that you deal with for each of the municipalities and the school districts?
Right. The school district is the business manager.
Okay.
And in this case, it was, you know, it's Portchester.
Mm-hmm.
So more MacWhort we've been dealing with. You know, in the case of, you know, the village, it's, you know, it's Leonie and it's Tony Soretto. We do meet as private supervisors initiative quarterly with all the stakeholders, both in Rybrook and in the village of Portchester. So we just had that meeting yesterday, actually. So there's regular communication, and we're trying to do that. And we're also trying to clear out all these old cases.
We have, let me just elaborate on that. We had our quarterly meeting yesterday, as Jeff said, and we go through every one of the cases that are, there are two parameters that I look at. One is how large is the assessment? In other words, we don't pay too much attention to an assessment of $500,000, but we do pay a lot of attention to an assessment of $5 million or $20 million, so that we know that there would be a large refund if they should get a substantial reduction. The other thing we look at is the number of years. We have one case that's eight years old, and several cases that are four, five, six years old. The one that was just settled now is four years, going back to 2014. Lindsey, a further answer to your question, no, they can't bring proceedings going back. Every year, as all the homeowners get notices of their assessment, you have a certain period of time to challenge that assessment. It goes for homeowners, and it goes for commercial properties as well, that they have to file a grievance that then goes to the BAR. And if they do not, if they miss that deadline, what is it? It's June, when does it start?
Third Tuesday in June.
Third Tuesday in June, they're out of luck. They can't come back anymore. That's finished. But if they do file, they do not have to file a note of issue to get on the court calendar for several years. And that's something that we're trying to correct, because the more years that are out there, the more difficult it is to settle, because there's more money at issue for them. So they want, the attorneys make a lot of money when you have five and six years at issue on a property with a large assessment. And what we're trying to do is cut down on that, because if the property owner has to get an appraisal, it costs them money. It's not so bad for them if they have to get an appraisal on a property, you know, that's five, six years in, and there's a lot of money at issue. But if they're going to pay $10,000 for a commercial appraisal on a property that's three years in or four years in, it doesn't pay as much. And the same thing with the attorneys. They get paid on a percentage basis. So my view is, what's good for them is not good for us. What's good for us is not good for them. And so we're trying to follow up on that and cut down the cases, and we have several in the hopper right now. So that's just by way of background.
So the choice, the final point on that is, the choice at the end of the day becomes settle or try, and there are costs associated, you know, the trying in this case.
Risks.
Risks. And some may be worth it. Some are not. Some are better to settle, and it's a judgment call.
And I just looked it up, and it's three units out of 145 that are ETPA Emergency Tenant Protection Act regulated. And to echo what Gary said, Lindsey, if they have not, if they haven't filed a petition, they're not, they can't do anything. But going forward, you know, for 2018, if they decide to file a petition, they'd be in that series of years. But going backwards, if they haven't filed...
No, I guess my concern was more if they had filed the grievances prior to the case law being established.
I think the case law dates back quite a while, doesn't it, Jeff? I forget what...
I don't know exactly what year this particular case is.
Yeah.
And any new cases would be affected by it?
Any new cases, okay.
It doesn't affect Rybrook at all, as far as I know. There's no ETPA in Rybrook, but Portchester, there are several.
Village of Merritt, but no Rybrook. There's some in the village of Merritt.
All right.
Jeff, could I ask, when is this payable? In other words, once it's approved, what's the timeframe? Because I know the school district is finalizing its budget, and I assume they've been made aware so that they can plan for it.
Right. So I'm in close contact with the school district. I better speak into my... So you can hear me. I've been in close contact with the school district and have worked out a payment date with them that works with their budget. Okay? And that is a term that will be in the consent judgment that's going to come down from the court that I'll sign, that the petitioner's attorneys will sign, and the judge will sign. And that will stipulate when the payment is to be made. And the terms in there are acceptable tomorrow.
What we do also, as part of our meeting, we went over all of the cases that may be coming up, that have notes of issue filed, that could be going to trial or settlement. And we discussed with the school district when payment should be made, and we have a date in the fall, so that when Jeff settles a case or Dan settles a case, you know, the payment will be, say, this is when you're going to get paid, so that they can time it to issue a bond at that time to cover, to take care of everything at one time.
Right. That's part of not surprising them.
Right. Good.
All right. We have a motion and a second? Yes?
I'll make the motion.
I thought we had it already. 3:20. No?
No, we went at the...
Sorry.
Motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Snardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Thank you. And the next one is entering into contract for Laserfish services and converting the town's code into an electronic format. This is, I hope everybody read the resolution. This is a project that the town is undergoing to eliminate the... And part of that, and at the suggestion of the town attorney, we want to convert the code, such as it is, to electronic format, like every other community has. So anybody can go on the website, look at the code, see what the law is, and go from there. The other part of it is to convert our public records into Laserfish format. Ecode is the only provider of Laserfish that does the, they do the Ecodes. So they are a sole provider, and we're piggybacking on that to put all of our public records into Laserfish. As the resolution says, the town of Rye's public records currently exist in an array of formats, including parchment, those are pretty old, bound volumes, paper, microfiche, cassettes, PDFs, et cetera, et cetera. So the Laserfish is a system whereby everything would be converted digitally, and it will be totally searchable. So anything that you want to find in the town of Rye, whether it's minutes from 1732 or a local law passed last year, we'll be able to find it. Somebody will be able to go on the internet and find whatever public records there are. You know, the first action that's been taken, as you're aware, is we have the J-CAP grant to convert all of our court files. And we'll apply for another one if all of them don't get converted this year. And the other ones are Hope's records, Hope's voluminous records to convert to Laserfish. And if the record that is converted is not, for some reason, required to be kept for archival purposes, they will be destroyed in the shredder when it comes around next. Obviously, and Tommy is well aware of this, because he's been doing the binding of the old records, there are a lot of records that are archival dating back into the 1600s, and of course, we're not going to get rid of those. But records that have been, you know, created in the normal course of business in recent years, there's no reason to hold those, and other than a digital format that complies with the record-keeping requirements of the state of New York. Did I say that well enough, Hope?
Yes.
Because you are the records officer.
To mention also, a lot of people are, want to find out about their genealogy, and it's very time-consuming. We'd have records that go back to the 1600s, and they'll come down to the office with a list of things they want us to look, so look at, or for them, death, marriages, births. And I think once we get those documents for public access, it will save a lot of time, and people won't have to make trips down to our office.
Even though we like to see them. We do like to see them, but they won't have to come.
I enjoy seeing them, but some people take, like, come from hours away without any notice, and I'd like to, you know, devote my time to them, but this will help them.
Yeah, there are some records that remain private, that are not public records.
Yeah. They are secure records, yeah.
They're secure records. They will be digitized, they will be accessible by the clerk and any other authorized officer, but not by the public.
Right.
But anything that's accessible by the public will be readily available, and hopefully, at some point, will be put on the website.
Well, genealogies, they have to be, the records have to be 50 years old. So, but anything, as far as marriage or death or birth records, they, only the person involved is able to get them.
Right. But anybody can get a record that's 50 years old or older, correct? Anybody can get a record that's 50 years old or older?
Yes, they can.
All right. That being said, may I have a motion and a second?
Could I ask a question first?
Sure.
This is a bad phone.
Yes, sir.
The bad phone.
Sure. Fred wants to speak to this. Okay. So go ahead.
So my question, it's a significant spend, so I was just curious, I don't recall from the budget sessions we had before its adoption. Was this budgeted for in this amount, or where are we taking this from?
Where we are, we're taking it from somewhere.
This would be a capital, this would be a capital expenditure.
Okay. And can we expect in next year's budget a reduction in other items that this would take the place of? Like we mentioned, getting rid of paper, and we're going to be ordering less paper, and it'll offset this somewhat?
I don't know if it'll completely, ultimately, it will. But also, this is in the budget now, but we've also, we've also applied for grants. So we may, Hope has a, that's applied for, right? The records matter?
We applied for a grant. We applied for a grant on twelve thirty-one, two thousand seventeen. We're hoping to hear something by July.
Good, so that if we get a grant, we won't need to spend all of this money.
Good.
Fred.
How you doing? Fred Seifert, I'm with the village of Rybrook, because I do all the IT. And I am well-versed in everything that was discussed in the resolution. We have Ecode, General Code for, I don't know, ten years now? Yes, maybe you're the only ones in Westchester that don't have it. It's great. People log in, board members can do whatever they want. Some people are still into the paper. Question for Debbie is, are we still going to get manuals? The paper? Okay, when you go into G, Ecode or General Code, they have two types of ways you can go. They do your code, your codification, and I don't know if that part, they give you X amount of paper copies.
They give us two paper copies.
Okay, so you're still going to go with that?
We have two paper copies, and the rest is electronic.
The rest is electronic?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're charging you thirteen thousand dollars to gather up the information and make this on the database? Around thirteen?
Yes.
Okay, and you're paying?
There are other services, they're going through our code, they're reading it.
Yeah.
Making the language consistent.
Well, they're the premier provider in this, and they know what they're doing, and it's like sole provider, you know, just go with them, you know? And they, what they also give you, which is a great thing, tool, they also give you access to everybody else's code. So if you're doing a law, you can go look at everybody else in New York State and see what they're doing. That's pretty good. We use it all the time. And you'll get, what are they charging, about seven hundred dollars a year for the web service? I don't know what, because I don't pay it, but I think it's around that.
Well, we've got starter portal.
Now, that's, that's different.
But that's where the Laserfish.
All right, well, it's, it's okay, but they charge you around seven hundred.
We're also getting, we're getting a ten percent discount because we're getting both at the same time. For the, the Laserfish and the, and the General Code.
Okay. All right, so you're going to get the web, you're going to get the paper, they're going to do everything, all right. The bigger piece is the Laserfish. I saw some things in the, the rundown, the costs. I think some things have been omitted, just for your knowledge. We have done this. This is an excruciating exercise. Okay, this is a big undertaking, large. We're into four hundred thousand dollars already. The numbers go quick. Okay, you have no budget in there for scanning, they just don't do that for nothing, and it just doesn't go like this. You know, you've got to go through all your records. Hope tells me you've got fifty years of payroll records, you've got to keep seventy. That's a lot of paper to scan, and you've got to go through it. We didn't, we made the mistake of not going through it, just put it in a box and send it. Well, you only need four reports, four different types of reports, to verify for retirement and social security. We scanned a lot of stuff we didn't need, because nobody went through it, they just told us, well, box it up, put it. Well, you've got to pay for it.
That's what our interns are going to do.
That ain't going to happen.
Only thing.
That ain't going to happen. Lot of it's eleven by thirteen. Unless you have all the equipment on your copier to do eleven by thirteen, you can't do it. Okay, what we do is, we send it to New Jersey, get it scanned. There's another process, they don't tell you, has to be indexed. Laserfish does that, and then they import it into your system. Okay, that's one thing, you've got to get some kind of estimate on what you want to get scanned and how much it's going to cost. Okay, that's large. We, you know, we don't have anywhere, well, we did the building plans. Again, I don't know what you have.
We don't have building plans.
I know, but you've got a lot of payroll. You know, and that you have to keep for seventy years.
Fifty. Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
All right, well, whatever, it's, it's long.
A young lady in my office has been scanning payrolls. She's done about, she's completed almost twenty years. But now we're at the point where the paper is too large for her to scan.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a large.
Eleven by thirteen, you don't have the roller thing to do.
So that's where we're at, as far as the payroll.
Problem. That's one thing. Another thing is, I didn't see anywhere you have an assessment of your current computer equipment. I also know you're running tape drive for backup. It's not going to work for Laserfish. You won't be able to complete your daily backup by the time the next one's got to start, it's so voluminous. You have to come up with a different type of backroom, backup system. You've got to get it done quick. Okay, that's enormously expensive. And since you don't have, this is going to be only copy, okay, your only copy, it's going to be electronic. So you're going to shred the old stuff. You've got to make sure you've got double backup.
We do. We will. We, right now, we have triple backup.
How's that? Tape doesn't, tape doesn't work. Tape will not work in this environment.
Tape, the tape backup has to be changed anyway, that's, that's all technology.
Because you can't verify tape backup. And also, with all the malware, what we have is, we go to a disaster, we have hourly backups. We go to backup, and then we go up to the cloud. But don't forget, this is your only copy, electronic, you don't have the paper anymore. You have to be doubly, triply secure that you're going to have it.
We will.
I don't see the money in the budget or the proposal. You're talking fifty thousand? But this is what you need. I mean, this is what everybody's doing, because you can't do it otherwise. This is what we experienced. Okay, and if you want to do web stuff, it took me, with the portal, again, it took me two weeks to get it done. And that's just me, it took four people, four people, two weeks. Need a new router, too, that's another thing, five thousand bucks for that. There's a lot of holes. So what I suggest you, before you do anything, do a better assessment of your computer hardware, your backup procedures, what you really want to scan, and your grants, because you had a lot of future stuff in there. That's great, but that's also expensive. And a lot of this is also time-intensive. You know, you don't have an IT guy, you know, everything you're paying out a consultant, anything you can do, their salary's going to charge you. That's not on top of his contract, because that's extra, you don't, you currently don't have Laserfish onboard, all right? Lot of expenses.
Are you suggesting we don't go to Laserfish?
No, take a step back, take an assessment.
Fred, you, you're suggesting we don't go to Laserfish?
No, succession, you go to it.
Yeah.
Do a better assessment of, this is the, whatever you got, which is what you need. You know, and I hate to go down the road and find, oh, we need a hundred thousand more, or, this doesn't work, why? I'm just letting you know, it's all everything we experienced.
Well, I appreciate it, but you're not suggesting that we abandon this, this project?
No, I think, I think.
No way.
I, I think you may be suggesting that instead of acting on this tonight, maybe we table this, and, and do a, a deeper dive, and maybe speak to people who have been through it, and, and unanticipated.
That's what I suggest you do.
Unanticipated costs that we may not.
Computer environment.
Right.
Because I can't make it, I know you have tape drive, that doesn't really.
I don't think there's a norm in doing that.
You know, you, you want Laserfish Avanti, I don't know if you have SQL Server, you may need another more service, I don't know what you need. Not for me to tell you, but it's something to look into, say, well, nobody told us, well.
All right.
Kind of advising you.
We could take your suggestion, we could take one tonight.
Computer environment you need, I mean, you may be happy with it. At least, okay, if we do this, we know we need this, this, and this, okay, that's step one, okay? Now it's going to cost us X amount to get this scanned.
All right.
I know you have grants, okay? Okay, and again, you also don't have a, you know, full-time computer, Sullivan's going to charge you for a lot of this stuff, you know? It's a big bill for a guy to spend, a consultant to spend two weeks at, you know, a hundred and fifteen an hour, you know, eighty hours billable to do this. That's what it took. Takes a lot of time.
All right, we appreciate it.
All right, I just want to make you aware of, you know, everybody's using it, popular product. The company itself, with Ecode, the help desk is phenomenal. I couldn't achieve what I did without it, without them. They even helped me do Denise's, but we had a meeting a week ago about all the tax open permits. I'll deliver that sometime this week, that's done. The service is fantastic. Yes, they did have some problem scanning, but they don't do it in-house anymore. They'd send it to New Jersey, it's done by a private company, you pay them through Laserfish, and it gets scanned. I mean, your staff, I know you're, you're short-staffed. It's tough for people to sit there and scan all this stuff all day long. It's, it's terrible, but you don't have the equipment. Those people just knock it out.
Do you suggest that we go with the three six?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's a do-it. You do it, that, that'll be great, but Laserfish, take a step back, decide what you're going to do, fill in the numbers as much as you can. You know, get, get Sullivan data, this is what we want to do, what do we really need to do? Go down on records, find out what you need, get kind of a, then the gentleman from Laserfish can help you. Who's the salesman you're going with?
Bruce Cadence.
Yeah, he, he can do ballpark figure, all right? And everybody's using it. It just takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, you know? So that, but you don't have any IT people, you'd have more consulting fees. Just a word of advice. And some of the things, like the forms and other thing, you can maybe do with your website.
Well, we are, we're already doing forms through, through another software contract we have, so I wasn't even going to go forward with that.
All right, all right, just a word of advice, this is what we experienced. Some of it was painful, some was good. But basically, people get online for our agendas in minutes, they do that all the time. We don't get full requests for that. All our building plans or land records, they're online.
All through Laserfish.
All through Laserfish.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Fred. Comments? What do you feel? I mean, I think that we need to go to Laserfish.
I agree with you, and I think, I, I, I think that was his sentiment. I think he's someone who's been through it, and I think he was just alerting us to some of the, the experiences they had. And in looking at the, the proposal, some of the things that he mentioned are not in here. And I think just to have a better idea of, of what we're looking at, I think would make sense. And we could go forward with the code, just hold off on the Laserfish. And he, I, I don't know what the timing of the ten percent is, if, we would miss that if we waited until the next meeting, but you could probably talk to them and ask them.
Unless we ask.
And ask them to honor it.
Always ask them.
And just say that we, you know, have some additional questions, and I'm sure they would honor it. So I would, I would suggest we table it until next month and just get a little more information. I think we can feel better about the action we ultimately take, which I think is going in this direction. It's just, we, we would have more information.
Well, I agree. Jeff, your code will have to wait a little bit.
Too bad, you're going to save the cost of an attorney. You'll eliminate the need for the attorney.
All right, well, I'm, I'm glad that Fred spoke to us about it. We'll look into it a little bit more deeply, from the perspective of somebody who's already gone through it.
I need some tape.
I know a good bookbinder. I'll get you his number.
That's the town code, by the way.
So would we, would we pass the code part tonight and then table the Laserfish, or should we table the entire thing?
Perhaps as a, as a sign that we're really serious about this.
Right.
We could go forward with the, the Ecode and let them know that we, we need to fill out our budget much more, in much more detail with the Laserfish. But fully intend to go forward with that as well.
But the, the fact is that the big cost in doing this is the photocopying, it's not the Laserfish.
The scanning.
Well, the scanning, right.
The scan, that's what I meant, the scanning.
Scanning.
So we could pass this and then look into everything more deeply. We don't have to spend the money, but we're authorized to spend the money. And if we're going to get Laserfish, then we're going to get Laserfish. And hopefully, we can wait until we know whether we're going to get the grant or not to use that money. We don't have to spend it now.
I agree.
And we can talk to them about it, General Code, I mean, about extending the ten percent. And, and, and yes, go forward with the, with the Ecode right now, and hold off on signing a contract for the other part, because it's two separate contracts, Tony, it's not one.
No, I understand, I understand. I'm just saying the amount in the resolution could be significantly higher after we talk to them. And I think if we had an idea.
Laserfish, not for the.
No, I mean, the, the scanning part is not in here, that's, that was the point that he's making.
Yes, that is correct.
And we don't know what that number is for those services. In other words, if Sullivan does it, and like he said, at the rate that they charge, you know, as a consultant, just don't. It's an unknown, and it could be a small amount, it could be a significant amount. And before we pass a, a resolution with, with a number attached.
Sullivan is not.
I just think it should be as accurate as we can.
Sullivan is not going to do the Laserfish. They're not doing the scanning either.
No, the scanning.
They're not going to do the scanning either.
Okay, so.
It's not Sullivan we have to talk to. Sullivan we have to talk to about the hardware.
Correct, and, and. And integrating the software into our system, and this is something they have done a number of times. This is, you know, this is a well-worn path for them. They've got relationships at General Code. So I think it's, I think Fred poses some really interesting questions about what additional costs are going to be involved that Sullivan has not said, oh, and by the way, this is going to cost you more. They've behaved as if, yes, this is standard operating procedure, we'll get you to the answer here.
That was a good point. We did get some proposals on scanning.
We have to have a meeting with General Code and Sullivan in the office.
Yeah. You said we should, or we did?
We should.
We did and we should, I agree.
And we should again.
I absolutely agree. And we have, by the way, some of the scanning is covered in the grant that we got from JCAP. Some of this, a good deal of the scanning is covered in the local government records grant that we've applied for. We'll know in the summer whether we've got it or not. And this is not something where we have to do it all at once. We can, we can budget in and do some every year. And going forward, the documents that we create can all be, can all go into Laserfish.
See, here, here's.
Has nothing to do with scanning.
Here's the thing that I'm concerned about. We have the JCAP grant, and that's going to enable us to do all the scanning. But.
For the, for the court records.
For the court records. What, what is not going to happen is putting those court records into Laserfish where they can be retrieved. So I'm concerned that we're going to still have to maintain.
Now, there, the, the JCAP grant includes three seats for Laserfish.
But we don't have Laserfish. So it includes three seats for something we don't have. So we have to get it.
Are included in the grant that we applied for.
The, the, there are three seats in the JCAP grant, I believe. And then there's five seats in the local government records grant that we applied for.
Looking at it today, and I thought I saw three seats, but, okay, well, I, I plan on sending you the proposals that we received, because we had to include those amounts for the, when we applied for the grant that Judy Eisenberg applied for. And maybe it'll get, just give you a feel for how much the scanning could cost, and then we'll work on the rest.
Well, as I say, we, we're going, we have three seats under the JCAP, but we have nothing to put it in. So if we get the Laserfish, then we could, then we can digitize the records and throw out the, the, we can throw out the, the court records, and finished with that. So with that said, do you, do you want to hold off on this whole thing, or should we go? Or should we go forward with at least, you know, this part of it? What do you want to think about it?
I myself would feel comfortable tabling it until next month and getting as much information as we can. I'm not looking to hold it up. I think it's a great idea. I think we all want to do it. I think we heard some good information tonight from somebody who's been through it. And I think it can all make us feel more comfortable next month when we pass it.
I agree with looking into it. The question is, do we look into it while we're getting it? Or no, we're gonna get it anyway. In my view, we're gonna get it anyway. So the question is, do we pull the trigger now? Or we can look into it again? I don't have a problem either way. Tommy?
Well, my thing is, what is the extra? If the computer stuff is outdated or it's not going to be able to back up properly, what is that gonna cost us? Or is that something we have to do anyway?
Ultimately, we should probably update that. But, look, I get the sense, look, I don't want to go headlong into this if we're not on board.
Let's table it for a month. I don't have a problem.
Do you want to go forward with the E-code or E-code part of it?
It really... That part, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. In other words, I think we're ready to go with that.
So...
If it sends a message that we're committed to them and we're ready to go with them, we just need more information on the other, then I'll make a motion to approve the E-code part of the resolution.
Okay, fine. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelberg.
I do that.
Counselperson Axelrod. Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And supervisors are coming.
Yes.
And then do we need a motion to table the Laserfish portion until next month?
Motion to table the Laserfish.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is, next one is Nick's Baby. Resolution implementing a fee for return checks. I think it's self-explanatory. I am surprised, Nick, that we never had a fee for return checks.
I know, because my bank is thirty-five. Thirty-five or forty.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the town council. It's never been the habit of the town to charge because in the past, there weren't very many. Fortunately, things have five, six a month in the past. Now that's like doubled and tripled. And it's time now that the accounting for all this is starting to cost money because it has to be returned and so forth, which we're not going to return anymore. We automatically unpaid the taxes and then send them a notice that they have to send us a new check because it happens, like with the village of Portchester, it runs over the month. Then come time to reconcile, it's very hard when there's checks outstanding. So we're gonna circumvent that by not redepositing a check. They must bring us another check. And in addition, we have to charge the fee just to come into the current financial arena.
Does anybody know how much banks normally charge for...
It's about thirty, thirty-five dollars. That's like the going rate.
That's what it used to be when I was younger, was that rate?
Chase is thirty-four.
Mostly are the same. I don't know if anyone is paying any higher. I don't know.
I am going to move to change this resolution from thirty to thirty-five.
Okay, that's good, fine.
Okay. So with that, we have a motion and a second for the resolution as amended.
I'll second. Did someone move? I'm sorry.
Did anybody make a second? She seconded before first.
Yeah, you gotta do it first.
No, I thought I was seconding Gary's motion to increase it.
Well, that was an informal motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. And Lindsay's second?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion as amended is, please call the roll.
Yes. Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod. Counselperson Baxter.
Yes.
And supervisors are coming.
Yes.
Okay, just while I'm here, just a few minutes, I can remind everybody.
This is now, now we're gonna jump right to the receivers' report.
Well, we haven't...
It's less than two weeks before this bill is due. So I'd advise everybody... The Westchester County Town of Rye bill, which is due April thirtieth. And right now, I think we're about forty percent in, so we have quite a bit to still collect. So people, please, pay attention to it and get it out to us as quick as you can. You have that envelope that's sent to you. It goes right to Jersey, to the lockbox. It's a nice, clean operation. So any questions, anyone has, please call us in the office. We're only too happy to help you.
I'm just worried that people who prepay their school taxes think they also prepaid their county taxes. You know, that's...
So, okay, any questions for me?
Right, and that's a message for everybody out there who may be watching. If you prepaid your school tax, you did not prepay your county tax.
No, absolutely not. It's a new, clean bill that's been mailed to you that is due.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Our next one is, in addition to our surplus item list, and that's our 2007 GMC Sierra. We're adding that to our current list of surplus items. Why don't we need that anymore?
The pickup truck is mostly, and I say, over ninety percent used at Rytown Park. There is some pickup truck work that's done picking up trash around Crawford Park during the winter. But this is wholly used by Rytown Park. We were advised when we had a vehicle review last fall that the pickup truck would be better not owned by us any longer. And while we work on getting Rytown Park to purchase a truck, we're preparing and having this declared surplus so that when we have the opportunity to replace it, we can do so and sell it at auction. Sarah Suma has learned how to, has established a relationship with a municipal auction house, which is really coming through for us. And she has buyers for all of our dumpsters and for the Sierra and also for the gas-fired boiler from Crawford Park that we need to get rid of.
Yeah, good.
That's great.
Good.
So we're ready to turn that stuff into cash.
Yeah, because that boiler is a good boiler.
What happens at Rytown Park when they don't have the truck to use anymore?
I'm not willing to sell that truck until we have a replacement truck because I do not want to cripple the maintenance crew. And that's going without a truck, that's what will happen. So what I, we've had our assessment of the condition of the truck. It's my intention to get a second opinion, perhaps from the city of Rye or the village of Rybrook. So we have a determination about exactly what to do with this truck.
I got one thing on this list. You have the baby grand marked on here.
Yeah, that was on the list, but...
But that's not there no more.
I think we should take it off the list.
Right, he says, why is it still on the list?
It's just the...
We're adding.
Oh, you're adding to the list, okay.
And the five dumpsters that we added tonight.
Right, okay. Motion and a second, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the Waverly Avenue Bridge. See, that didn't pop up on my... I saw the resolution, but it's not on my iCompass. Hang on.
Overliable.
Wait, I have it on mine, I'll share.
Yeah.
No, I don't need it. I know what it says.
You sure you don't want to look?
No, I don't want to look.
It's all up here.
The Waverly, the Town of Mamaronek is seeking a grant to replace or repair the Waverly Avenue Bridge, which is sorely in need of work. And even though the bridge is in the Town of Mamaronek and it is maintained by the Town of Mamaronek, according to the bridge agreement, going back, forgot what year that is, a while ago, 2005. The settlement of 2005 states that all member parties, and that, and the Town of Mamaronek was a member of this because they are also part of the Hillside Avenue Bridge. Let's call it a consortium, where the Town of Mamaronek, the Village of Mamaronek, and the Town of Rye are all responsible for the Hillside Avenue Bridge. So because the Town of Mamaronek is part of that agreement, all of the other municipalities have to approve their application for a grant. And that's what this resolution does. It says that we support their application to get money for Under the Bridge New York program. Any questions?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Do we have any other reports? The highway report is submitted. The clerk's report is submitted. The tax collection report is submitted. Does the assessor have anything else?
I just want to mention, if any of the seniors are watching, that the exemption deadline, or if you know of anybody, the exemption deadline is May 1st. Today, for the first time, we tried a robo-call to all the seniors who have not come in yet. And apparently, it has gone out. I recorded two separate messages, and we're starting to get calls back from people. And it's very cost-effective. I guess mailing 213 reminders would be about a hundred and four dollars. It looks like the cost of this is about seventy-five dollars. And we have it all set up so that come April 30th...
Is this for Star, Denise?
It's for the enhanced star and the senior-aged exemption. So it's all income-based, age sixty-five plus. And so that's working. And just a reminder for everybody to come in with their income.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other business before us? And the answer is no, other than comments from the councilpersons. Anybody would like to comment? Well, if not...
I would like to just briefly talk about the Sustainability Committee.
Oh, good.
So I promise to be brief. But this is a group that's been meeting for the past year. It includes residents from Rye, Rybrook, Portchester, and the city of Rye, who has a very robust sustainability committee, and they've lent their expertise to us. Debbie has been instrumental. Sarah has been a great help. Isabel Schindler, who is a junior at Rye High School, has been helping us a great deal, and she's been interning with us. So the first thing we did was draft a mission statement. And I know it's on the webpage, but I just thought that I could share it with you to let you know what our purposes are. The mission of the Rytown Sustainability Committee is to advocate for a more sustainable future through public participation and intermunicipal collaboration. The committee will educate Rytown residents and develop policies that will assist community members to adopt more sustainable practices. This will reduce the Town of Rye's carbon footprint and protect its natural beauty. As I mentioned, there are members from all, two communities. We are still seeking a representative from Rynec. We'd love to have somebody join us. We meet monthly. We have recently, some months ago, become New York State's 200th Registered Climate Smart Community, which is a great honor. We've got a grant secured to install the electrical, electric vehicles charging stations in Crawford Park. We've conducted energy audits of all town properties. We're looking into LEDs. I know we recently signed that agreement to change over all the light bulbs in Crawford Park. We've proposed an environmentally preferable purchasing policy for the council to consider. Recycling bins have been located in Rytown Park and Crawford Park, which, believe it or not, had not existed prior. So that's a good improvement. Yes, absolutely. So they are now there. And our page, we have a page now on the town's website, and the Facebook page has been reintroduced. We are looking to secure signage for the recycling bins. We're looking into maybe trash containers or dumpsters to be specific to trash versus recycling material. We are continuing our progress toward going from a certified climate smart community to a registered climate smart community, which New York State has deemed it a checklist of sorts. And we should revisit that checklist at some point.
Climate smart community to a certified climate smart community.
Okay. So, right, so we are registered, and we're going to a certified, right? And we're also looking at establishing, along the lines of our mission, a speaker series. And we're looking into possible speakers in the coming months to talk about organic alternatives to pesticides and lawn care products, to educate residents about what they possibly could do as opposed to the old standard. We're in the process of looking at that now and hope to have something to announce soon. But it is a great group. We have great conversations, we have great meetings, very passionate people about environmentally conscious practices. And I give Gary a lot of credit for having this idea and feel honored that he approached me and asked me to be involved in it. And I think it's something that will sustain itself going forward.
That's good, thank you, Tony.
Very intended.
I have a question. Has conversation been held on the food compost thing? That the city of Scarsdale, the village of Scarsdale is pioneering, including Benny Salamitro?
We've had many conversations about that because I believe Rybrook is on the verge of introducing their own composting program. So we're looking at that very closely. We're supporting that. And it's something that we've talked about, maybe for a speaker in the future to come in and talk about.
That's what I was thinking. That would be good.
Yep.
All right, great.
I have a couple of things to add to what you just said about the Sustainability Committee. First of all, is the members of the Sustainability Committee have offered to assist the village of Rybrook at Rybrook Day in manning their composting booth.
Oh, great, that's fantastic.
In addition to that, I was speaking with our featured speaker today. And it looks as if Wednesday, May 23rd, may be the date of our first speaker program. And we passed the resolution last month to hire an electrical contractor. And as the electrical contractor is making repairs to our streetlights, he is replacing the bulbs with LEDs. So we've already started the conversion.
Great. That's one more.
And one final part. Lindsay has been a part of this committee too, so I didn't want to leave her out. But she has pinch-hit when I couldn't get to a meeting. And we've kind of tag-teamed. When I couldn't be there, she was, and when she couldn't be there, I did. So I thank her for being a part of this too.
She could be the Rynec member.
I could be the Rynec member. And I apologize for not being there. I missed the last meeting, I was under the weather, so...
We'll get you next time.
Anybody else? If not, I have something. I wasn't gonna have something, but I realize I do. I just wanted to do an update on Crawford. I got an email from Gary Jan Francesco. I'm just gonna summarize the work that's going on now. The electrical service. The new underground service cables and conduits have been run from the property line pole at Ridge Street all the way to the transformer page. And the contractor is just waiting for Con Edison to deliver the transformer. When the transformer is set, they will pull the electrical service cables from the transformer into the building and tie them into the new service panels, which are mounted in the basement already. Water service, we finally got approvals from Suez Water Company and the Department of Health. That we've been, you have no idea what it is to get approvals from. Forget the Department of Health, Suez is the worst. Demolition and abatement. Gary met with the contractor to discuss logistics, dumpster locations, fencing, et cetera. The abatement scope has been registered with New York State. Notice period has expired. Contractor plans to be on-site Wednesday to commence work. to commence work. Today is, what today, what's today? Tuesday. Oh, that's tomorrow. That's tomorrow. And after the, after that, the contractor will abate the identified work in the basement, and then demolition is to commence thereafter. The big item, the renovation bid specs, that's been delayed a little bit. They've been waiting for revised HVAC, electrical, sprinkler, plumbing, et cetera. They're going to coordinate all the work with the architectural specifications, and hopefully, the bids will go out on April the 25th. And with a walkthrough on May 1st, bids will be due on June 6th. I was hoping to award the bid at the, we could do a bid award at the May meeting, but it looks like it'll be done at the June meeting. Debbie, when, I have two questions. When is the June meeting? Is that, and 16th, 17th?
19th.
19th.
19th, good. And do you know when Ry Brook Day is offhand?
It's Father's Day weekend. Hold on, I'll do it.
Father's Day's weekend, 16th and 17th in June. Sundays, it's Sunday the 17th is Father's Day.
Okay. So this will be awarded right after Father's Day. I'd hoped to award it beforehand, but we're going to, we're going to make sure Gary was going to make a presentation with boards and everything. And hopefully, we can make that presentation at Ry Brook Day so that everybody can see what Crawford Park is going to look like.
Good idea.
Okay. With that, I'm done. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.